Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's six thirty P. M. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill twenty-five sixty, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public both in-person and virtually using the Zoom platform. Zoom login instructions are on the agenda meeting, uh, agenda of tonight's meeting. If members of the public would like to comment on an agenda item either virtually or in person, they were to have emailed their comments or their requests to speak to the city recorder prior to noon today. Uh, individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city council will also have Gladstone City event announcements during the meeting and business from the audience at the end of the meeting. To speak during either time, virtually or in person, the same rules apply. Individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Present.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor, um, Milch.
Here. And just let the record show, Counselor Blough is absent. Counselor Garlington is attending via Zoom tonight. Let's stand for the roll call, please. All right, so for the flags of the, apologies, apologies. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Administrator Betts, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Only that I'd like to wish our city recorder, Tammy Bannack, a happy birthday and thank her for being here this evening.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
And happy birthday. Uh, there was an agenda published that had, uh, an item eleven, and we have withdrawn that item from consideration tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, uh, the numbers, uh, I may get them wrong based on what's now on the, on the city website, uh, because I have the original packet for this meeting, but we'll deal with that later. Um, okay, so we have on our consent agenda, um, we have nine items on the consent agenda: approval of the August thirteenth regular minutes, approval of July bank balances, budget report for the period ending July thirty-first, approval of the July check register, legal costs for the month of July, department head monthly reports for the month of August. Then, uh, there's a request to consider accepting an overtime grant from the Oregon Department of Transportation for Traffic Diversion Enforcement. Uh, a request to consider approving a professional services agreement with Cumming Management Group for providing project management support services for the inflow and infiltration reduction project, and approval of liquor license application for a change of ownership, twenty-four-seven Market, First Gladstone Incorporated, eight-ten East Arlington. Would any members of the council like to, uh, pull any of the items from the consent agenda? Counselor Cook.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item one, and I have a question about item six, um, for Chief Schmerber.
All right. Uh, item one, the minutes of the meeting, you'd like to pull that, and uh, let's do with your question for item number six.
All right. I think it's a quick clarification. I just wanted to make sure I had this right. Um, so Chief, on page, um, six dash five, it's the bias monthly report. Um, I just wanted to make sure I had this correct. So, um, it's showing that in the one-two-three-third paragraph, that one bias crime was reported, um, but there were no details. Um, and then the next paragraph under it says there were no bias crimes?
Yeah, it was an error on our part.
Okay, no worries. And then I saw that there was on page six dash eight, there was, um, one bias crime that had been cleared, and then one that had a new case assigned. So is that a former?
That's, that's, yeah, that was a format.
Okay, no worries. Thank you.
All right. So that took care of your concern about item six. Okay, but you still want to, uh, uh, take item one out?
Yeah, I just have some corrections for item one.
Okay. All right. Um, let's go ahead and take a look at the, um, rest of the agenda there. Is, is there, uh, a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Um, make that motion?
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve items two through nine of the consent agenda. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Garlington. Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. Uh, the remainder of the consent agenda is approved. Counselor Cook, now I'll return to you for your questions regarding the minutes.
Yeah, I have two requests for corrections. Um, the first one is just, I'd like to see if we could get verbatim notes for agenda item number fourteen, um, which was the discussion of possible proclamation process. Um, I think that citizens, um, that the minutes should reflect the discussion that happened in its entirety, um, as well as what council members were supportive of it and which were not, and their reasons why.
Okay.
Um, my second correction is that, um, both during our last meeting and then in the minutes, incorrect pronouns were used for me, and so I just would like that corrected in our meeting minutes. Um, I use they/them pronouns. I have for years, and I've introduced myself to council several times. Um, and then a friendly reminder to staff and other council members, um, I use they/them pronouns, and please be respectful. Um, if you're unable to use those, you can simply refer to me by my name.
Very good. Thank you. Um, I apologize. I know that I have probably made the mistake of misgendering you myself, uh, on occasion, uh, because I'm going to just use the excuse because I'm old, and it's all still a little new to me, but, uh, it was certainly not, uh, disrespectful, uh, in its intent. Uh, but I, I understand where you're coming from. Administrator Betts, is staff able to provide verbatim, uh, a section of the minutes? Is that something that's possible?
Sure. So what I would suggest is that we go ahead and keep the minutes pulled from this meeting, and we will do verbatim on section fourteen, correct the pronouns, and then bring it back October eighth for approval.
That sounds good. I, I attend a lot of meetings where we don't always have a quorum, and so minutes of previous meetings sort of get backed up and accumulated, then we get them all at once. So I know that it's not a hundred percent necessary to approve minutes right away. Um, so, uh, Counselor Huckabee, do you have a question or a comment?
No, I have another minor, um, correction.
Oh.
On the last paragraph of one dash one, the very last sentence, it says Counselor Garlington asked for correction on page one dash five. That was actually me, and it was confirmed by Counselor Cook.
Okay, so, uh, where it said, so in terms of the, the paragraph that, or the sentence that said, "ask for the correction", that should be Counselor Huckabee asked for the correction?
And confirmed by Counselor Cook, correct.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure where I see the language on confirmed. I just didn't.
I want it added.
Oh, you want it added. Okay, got it. Okay, so the correction, and Counselor Cook confirmed. Okay, so do we have that written down? Okay. So, uh, with those corrections, we'll send these minutes back to be, um, updated, and they will come to us at a future meeting. All right, thank you. Um, so that gets us through nine items. We are up to correspondence. Administrator Betts, is there any relevant correspondence for tonight's meeting?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, and I want to, I got a couple of emails. I get emails from citizens all the time, and I want to mention that, um, because we talk about correspondence here, doesn't mean that we as city councilors don't hear from citizens on issues and, uh, respond to them. It doesn't always relate to an agenda item for that, for a particular council meeting, but we do hear from people a lot, and, uh, sometimes it's critical, sometimes it's supportive, sometimes it's with positive suggestions for things that people would like to see in the city. So, um, I want you to know that, uh, our emails are public. Uh, it's good to hear from citizens. It's good to hear feedback, both positive and negative. It helps us do our job better. All right. Um, item ten, Gladstone City Event Announcements. Do we have anybody who's requested to do a city event announcement tonight?
We have not received any requests.
All right, well, I will just remind people briefly that Friday night is another one of our concerts in the park, and, uh, I believe there is a movie afterwards as well, the last one, okay? And you'll find the details, or maybe Counselor Huckabee has her hand on the mic. She might even know the details.
I just wanted to add that the Rotary Club is also, um, the sponsor for food and beverage.
That's right.
Music in the Park, food and beverage, and a movie. Your whole Friday night, right there.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we move on to the regular agenda. Oh, by the way, let me just mention, uh, one change in tonight's agenda that, um, I didn't mention, but we normally have been getting reports, monthly reports from Clackamas Fire District, with whom we, uh, contract for fire services here in Gladstone. Uh, we've been doing that now for two years. It's been going very well. The reports have been very informative, but it takes time from the fire department staff, and we have a committee that kind of oversees and meets with fire department staff, and, and we thought about this, and I think the decision was, they can give us printed reports now that will be included in the agenda, so we are as well informed, although not in person, as we have been. Uh, but, um, it's, so far, I think the communication has been positive. Do I have, uh, confirmation of that from other council members? Okay, good. So that's why that's not on the agenda tonight. Uh, but just so you'll know, we won't be seeing in-person reports unless there's maybe an event or something that it's really good to have them report directly to us. All right, our, our regular agenda item, um, one item has been pulled. The next one we will deal with is ordinance fifteen thirty-three regarding the rezoning of the Gladstone Nature Park property, Meldrum Bar Park Parcel and Olson Wetlands to open space. Then ordinance fifteen thirty-four, Gladstone Urban Renewal Plan Amendment, and directing that notice of approval be published. And finally, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, legislative priorities for the League of Oregon Cities, LOC. Uh, and then we'll get to business carried forward after that. So, uh, item, well, the next item then, which was twelve on the original agenda, is ordinance fifteen thirty-three about rezoning, and I think we have staff here tonight to guide us through that one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a city council goal to rezone these properties. When we were going through this process for the Gladstone Nature Park and the Meldrum Bar Park, we also noticed that the Olson Wetlands needed to be rezoned to open space. So Heather Austin, our planner with Three J Consulting, will walk you through the process of adopting the ordinance. Thank you, Administrator Betts. We have a short slideshow, so I'm going to grab the, the clicker from Tammy.
And I just asked, um, our city recorder to grab the legislative hearing, um, text so that we can open a public hearing to go through this item. Thank you.
On this kind of a land use ordinance, we have a script that we follow, uh, and we kind of do things in a certain order each time. So I will follow that script, uh, reading from, literally, a script. Um, so I apologize if I get anything wrong, but I'll do my best. Uh, the public hearing on, um, rezoning and designating to open space, uh, ZC file number, planning files, ZC twenty-four dash zero-one and CP twenty-four dash zero-one is called to order. The proposed amendments would rezone three parcels in Gladstone, Gladstone Nature Park, Meldrum Bar Park Entrance Parcel and Olson Wetlands to the open space designation. The order of business we will follow in conducting this hearing will be presentation of the staff report, entry of correspondence, if any, into the record, public testimony, additional staff comments, questions from the city council members. Then we will close the hearing without any further testimony from the audience. We'll have an opportunity for discussion by the city council and a decision. Any person, any interested person may present testimony concerning the proposed amendments. The public hearing is your opportunity to comment on the proposal before the city makes a decision. We want to hear what you have to say, and we want you to give us your point of view. Help us to understand why you have drawn your conclusion and how it relates to the proposal. Public testimony for this hearing, like most, will be called for in three groups: testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you wish to speak, you should fill out one of the testimony forms, which, do we have them in the back, uh, like we do for, okay, and submit it to the city recorder. I'll recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through me. When you testify, please state your name and address for the record as this hearing is being recorded. If you are participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. All right, at this time, before we get, uh, too far into this, I want to ask members of the city council, if you are abstaining from this matter or need to declare any conflicts of interest, please indicate the nature of the conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. So I will start with Counselor Huckabee.
No.
None.
No?
None.
Counselor Garlington?
Uh, only that I am part of the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park, which resides, our work is done at the nature park.
Okay. Um, and, but you're not, you don't see that as a conflict of interest or reason to abstain from participation?
No, I don't think so. I'm just saying it out loud so that I'm saying it out loud.
And I will say too, that I live, uh, very close to the Olson Wetlands. It is the closest designated park to my residence, uh, but I don't think I have a conflict of interest, and, uh, I don't think this will affect up or down, one way or the other, the, the property value of my home, uh, and so I intend to participate as well. Okay, it's now time to hear the staff report on this.
Thank you, Mayor Milch, and members of council. Um, as you stated, tonight we are talking about changing the zoning designation, as well as the comprehensive planning designation for the Gladstone Nature Park, the Meldrum Bar Park Entrance, the rest of Meldrum Bar Park is already zoned open space, uh, as well as the Olson Wetlands. Currently, um, two of our properties are zoned, um, the high-density residential, which is our MR multi-household residential, that's Meldrum Bar Park Entrance and Olson Wetlands in the middle. And at the top, you can see that the nature park is zoned C-two community commercial. So neither of those are the open space zoning district. Neither of those allows the city to, um, do open space and park-type programming, um, within that zoning. So all three are proposed to be changed to open space, which shows along the left side, uh, column. So the green zoning is the open space, the red is the commercial, and the orange is the residential. We'd be converting those over on our zoning map. As far as our comprehensive plan designation, it was a little trickier to determine what our current comp plan designations are, because our document is, uh, printed in black and white and from nineteen seventy-nine. And so, um, it seemed fairly obvious that the nature park is high-density residential designation. Um, I had to presume that the Meldrum Bar Park Entrance is medium-density residential, because it's not shown on the map that's within the comprehensive plan. Um, and then Olson Wetlands is low-density residential. So all three are in the residential comprehensive plan designation, um, all proposed for open space. We do have open space as a designation in our comprehensive plan, so we would just plan to apply that directly. Um, so why rezone and redesignate these parcels? Well, the city has taken a lot of time, um, to put together comprehensive plans, parks master plan, and site plans for both nature park and Meldrum Bar site. So, um, to be able to realize those visions and plans, the zoning needs to be appropriate so that those types of uses of those spaces can be, um, applied for, and, um, anything that is being proposed structure-wise would go to the Planning Commission for a design review, or if it happens to fall in that conditional use column, it would be design review and a conditional use permit. So we would still have another layer of review for anything that's being developed in the parks, um, but they would be able to do that. For example, in the MR zoning district, um, you wouldn't be able to do playground and accessory structures or any kind of fields or courts. Um, so it would really restrict what you can do with your park areas that have been so thoughtfully planned. Um, at the Planning Commission hearing, we had, um, testimony asking if it was appropriate to rezone the Gladstone Nature Park at this time, because the three resolutions that created the park between nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and nine identified a library, a public library, as part of the development for the property. So we, um, did ask the city attorney to weigh in on this, to make sure that we were following the appropriate steps. Um, and the city attorney's office clarified that the, the resolutions that adopted the citywide Parks Master Plan in two thousand and seventeen, and that adopted the Gladstone Nature Site Plan in two thousand and twenty, would, um, basically supersede those previous resolutions. So you don't need to have a full separate resolution that changes the use of the nature park. Um, the other thing that comes up when we consider rezoning residential land is whether or not, um, well, residential and commercial land, is whether we're taking, um, the opportunity to provide housing or economic development out of the city's inventories for those uses. So we did review the housing needs analysis that provides a buildable lands inventory that basically assigns the potential for building housing on properties in the city, and the housing needs analysis is shown here, um, and it did designate these properties as public or exempt for Olson Wetlands and Meldrum Bar Entrance. And then it didn't consider the nature park because of that commercial zoning. So we feel confident that we're not impacting the housing, the residential capacity of the city. So then we looked toward economic development, um, and we did find that the Gladstone Nature Park, having been, um, a resolution bringing that into the city for open space and potentially a public library for public uses, starting in nineteen ninety-nine and continuing to two thousand and nine, there's been no economic development planning for the city, for this property, um, and no, uh, u- use of any, um, including this as a resource for economic development. So it's been over twenty years that it's been designated for public uses. Um, and then we also are required to look at roadway, um, impacts and determine whether there would be any significant impacts to any of our transportation systems in the city. And typically, um, rezoning from residential or, uh, commercial to a park use is, um, a lesser, um, demand on a public roadway system over the course of the year. I understand. I've been to ballgames. I know they get busy, but those are pretty rare, the grand scheme of a whole year when you're comparing that to, say, a neighborhood of houses or a commercial development. So, um, we were able to find, and it's in the staff report, um, that's been included into the Planning Commission recommendation, that there are no, um, significant changes to, um, housing economic development or roadway capacity that would impact the city's ability to provide those services. So with that, in the Planning Commission recommendation in your packet, there are findings that show that the proposal is consistent with the Oregon statewide planning goals, the applicable sections of the Gladstone Municipal Code, Metro's functional plan, and the transportation planning rule. Um, we did send public notice to property owners and residents within two hundred and fifty feet of all of the sites, as well as publishing in the newspaper. So with that, uh, the planning staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning and redesignation, and we've provided a sample motion to that effect. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do council members have questions for our planning staff at this point, based on, uh, the, on the report? Go ahead, Counselor Alexander.
Yeah, I just have one, so I just, to make it short and simple, is there a precise definition of an open space?
That's a good question. I'm going to look at our definitions section really quickly.
Or land use or something. It was different, how, how you define it.
We do define it. We define open space as land that is undeveloped and that is planned to remain so indefinitely. Open space also refers to the land-zoned OS, open space district, and developed with the uses identified in GMC Chapter seventeen point two-six, which is the open space chapter.
Okay, thank you. And then, yeah, second one to follow. How does this benefit our city?
So this allows you to then move forward with those plans that you've adopted, and once you have the funding available to do so on your capital improvement programming, that you can then develop those park resources.
Okay, thank you.
And one more question about land being undeveloped. I know that, but back in the, um, early two thousands, and then it was codified in a report done in, uh, December of two thousand and fifteen, the city did a study of, uh, Gladstone Nature Park land and, uh, designated it as a good site for a city reservoir, similar to the water tanks that already exist on Webster nearby. Uh, is that kind of use permitted under open space zone?
Yes, um, and we did cover that, um, at Planning Commission as well. I should have touched on that. Um, it is a conditional use. You'll see it, um, as number seven. It's a public utility facility within a habitat conservation area. There is Upland Habitat Conservationary District over all of the Gladstone Nature Park, so we would review that public facility with the Planning Commission, but that would be something that could be developed.
Okay, so if, if the city ever got to the point where they were ready to, to do that, it would come before Planning Commission because it's a conditional use, uh, but it wouldn't be outright prohibited.
It would not be prohibited. It would also need a design review, because current, because currently any structures require design.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions of staff? We can move on to the public testimony part. Um, staff, did we receive any correspondence on this matter other than the items included in the agenda materials?
We have not received anything.
Okay. Uh, public testimony then. Uh, is anyone present who wishes to speak in support of this proposal? Does anyone?
Anyone online?
And you're not seeing any, anyone online as well. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the proposal?
And no one raising their hand.
Okay, and does anyone wish to provide any testimony that is neither in support of or in opposition to the proposal?
No one online either.
Okay. I don't believe there's any further testimony or further questions from the audience. Uh, staff, do you have anything to add?
No, um, nothing at this time, but again, happy to answer any questions or provide any clarification.
Okay, well, are the, do councilors have any other, uh, questions or need for clarification? Yes, Counselor Cook.
It is not substantive at all, um, but I think I found something that needs correction on page twelve dash two, um, under section three. Um, they refer to the city administrator as a man. Let's make that neutral.
All right, it says the city administrator or his designee. Um, and can we just, uh, okay, when we go to approve this, can we just leave out the word his?
Well, so it is in the current development code, so it's codified. We do, we could certainly take an opportunity. We're opening the code. It'll be here in October, so we can make that correction as part of our, to make it gender neutral, but currently it's in the development code as written.
Uh, so this is quoted from our current?
I believe, I believe so. I'm trying to find the piece, um, oh, uh, for the findings. Can you, would you mind repeating the page number?
Yes, that's, uh, twelve dash two.
Twelve dash two.
Section three at the bottom. It's just in the wording of the ordinance itself. I don't think that's a reflection. That's a.
No, that can be corrected for sure.
Okay.
Yes, the, um, where we make the finding responding to the code language, that's where we need to go through with a code update and change the language, but we can definitely change the ordinance language.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
As was mentioned earlier, our comprehensive plan was prepared in nineteen seventy-nine. I, uh, marvel at how remarkably, uh, current it seems to me in terms of its, uh, if, its direction and its policy, but it is very outdated in terms of, uh, ref, uh, you know, references to population and, uh, size of the city and other things. Um, so, okay, we'll keep that, keep that word in mind when we get to, uh, adopting. So, um, with, if there are no more questions or clarifications, um, I'm going to declare the, um, public hearing on file number ZC two-four dash zero-one and CP two-four dash zero-one to be closed to additional testimony. So now it is time for the city council to deliberate on a decision. Uh, is there any discussion by the city council? Would someone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we move forward with the approval of ordinance one-five-three-three, approving the rezoning and redesignation of the Gladstone Nature Park, the entrance parcel of Meldrum Bar Park, and the Olson Wetlands as per ZC twenty-four dash zero-one and CP twenty-four dash zero-one.
I second.
All right, it's moved by Counselor Robertson, seconded by Counselor Alexander. Counselor, uh, Heather?
With point of order about the change to section three, uh, section three to say there instead of his.
Right, well, or, or just, um, delete the word his.
Or just designate, it's fine.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay. So with that correction, that's been moved and seconded. I want to say thank you to the Planning Commission for their role in examining this and making sure that it's in compliance with, with our various documents that it has to comply with, and you're hearing this already. So we had a motion. Any further discussion?
No, just because we didn't spend, we didn't spend very much time on this topic, but it doesn't mean that, that it's not deeply important. Really, the Planning Commission has done quite a bit of work to get this ready for us.
And the staff.
And staff, going through, this is a lot of pages. And so just, I think that nobody should interpret the lack of questions or the lack of discussion as a lack of engagement on this topic, I think. It was just very well presented, and I think, I hate to speak for anyone else, but I think we just absorbed what was given to us, and great work.
Well, and I'm grateful for, for, you know, for the, for the people. I think it was the, probably the friends of Gladstone Nature Park who were aware that this needed to be done, and staff who broadened the scope of it to include other properties where it's most appropriate. So. All right, I think we're ready for a vote. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Councilor Roberts.
Yes.
Councilor Cook.
Yes.
Councilor Alexander.
Yes.
Councilor Huckabee.
Yes.
Councilor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The vote passes unanimously, therefore the ordinance is approved and effective tonight. Thank you all. We move next to the item to consider approving ordinance 1534 and ordinance making certain determinations and findings relating to and approving the Gladstone Urban Renewal Plan, substantial amendment, and directing that notice of approval be published. Staff, I see Elaine Howard is coming forward and she will be presenting. Good evening.
Yeah, I think Elaine has been, before the city council, several months ago, we started this process of adding property into the Gladstone Urban Renewal District. Tonight is the final piece in that process, and so I will have Elaine go over where we've been and what the council needs to consider for this evening.
I'm Elaine Howard. I've been working on this project with Tiberius Solutions, who does all of our financial work, and John Southlake, who is in the room, who's been working with you as precursor to this amendment coming forward. So for him, this is kind of the culmination of work that he's been working on for you. Some of this is going to be repetitive for you, and I'm sorry about that, because this is a public hearing, and I guess I need to stop here. We need, this is a public hearing, so we probably need to read all of the other information in before I go any further.
And this will be a little repetitive as well, but we'll go through it again. So let me see if there is a file number for this.
I think I just referred to the ordinance number. Yes, the ordinance number is fine, Mayor.
All right, so so this is the public hearing on ordinance number 1534, an ordinance making certain determinations and findings related to and approving the Gladstone Urban Renewal Plan, substantial amendment, and directing that notice of approval be published. Again, we will conduct the hearing in the same way. Staff report, entry of correspondence, if any, into the record, public testimony, additional staff comments in response to public testimony, questions from the planning, from the city council. Then we'll close the hearing with no further testimony from the audience, and we will have our discussion as a council and make a decision. The testimony rules are the same as the other. Anybody can present testimony. We'll take it in this order, testimony in favor, testimony opposed, and neutral testimony. And if you wish to speak, you know the rules regarding the filling out the cards. And for people that are watching online who may not have been interested in the previous agenda item for this one, I will just make this more clear. When you testify, please state your name and address for the record as this hearing is being recorded. If you are participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. I'll go through the council again about conflicts of interest or intention to abstain. I'll start once again with Councilor Huckabee.
None.
Council Alexander?
I don't think so. I mean, where my house is, I don't think it.
Right, your house is technically out of the district. We checked them out, so, okay. All right.
In an abundance of caution, I will say that I have in the past explored commercial opportunities in this area, but they are no longer relevant, and I don't think relevant to this discussion. I'm just openly extra disclosing.
All right, I appreciate anybody, you know, who goes above and beyond disclosure just for the sake of completeness. Councilor Roberts?
None, thank you.
Councilor Garlington?
None, thank you.
Okay, and I have no conflicts and intend to participate. So now we're ready for staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Because you may have to, this isn't a PowerPoint, it's a PDF. I'm always flexible because in all the different city councils and planning commissions I go to, you don't know how many times we have little problems like this, so it's not a big deal at all. The, what I will go through is the role of the city council, the process of a substantial amendment, a little crash course Urban Renewal 101, in case we have people watching who don't understand urban renewal. A review of the plan amendment and report the next steps and potential for public testimony. Next. The role of the city council at this point is to hold the hearing and to receive input from citizens and taxing districts and consider the ordinance. Next. The process for the adoption of a substantial amendment pursuant to ORS 457 is the same as the process of the adoption of an original urban renewal plan. It goes through these steps. The Urban Renewal Agency first reviews the amendment and decides whether or not to send it out for public review. That has been done, and it did get sent out to the taxing districts. A copy of the amendment and report were sent to all the taxing districts. The mayor, your city administrator, and I made a presentation to Clockmouth County, telling them of the amendment. We did go to the Planning Commission and asked for their review of conformance to the comprehensive plan and received unanimous support that the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment conforms to the comprehensive plan. There was one abstention. And then tonight is, as City Administrator Bet said, the last step, which is the city council hearing and vote on the non-emergency ordinance. Next. So a little crash course Urban Renewal 101.
I'm going to get it.
Thank you. When we all pay our property taxes in November, typically our property tax revenues go to the tax collector at the county. The tax collector disperses those revenues to all of the different taxing jurisdictions. Urban renewal changes that process a little bit in that any, once an urban renewal area is formed, any increases in the property taxes collected within that urban renewal area are distributed to the Urban Renewal Agency instead of to all of the other taxing jurisdictions. Those increases in your assessed value and therefore the increases in taxes in Oregon happen for two reasons. One, just we are limited to a 3% increase in our assessed value every year. Unless we're in a major recession, those increases happen on our property tax bills every year. When you get your property tax bill, typically the real market value increases more than that. And a lot of times people look at that and get upset or worried. The assessed value is the value upon which your property taxes are paid, and that is limited to that 3% increase unless there is rehabilitation or new construction. If either of that happens, then the county assessor is able to reassess your property and reestablish that assessed value of your property. So when an urban renewal area is formed within the city represented by that blue within the graphic, the values within that area are the, at the time that it's established, continue, the property taxes continue going to all the different taxing districts. However, any increases in those property taxes from that 3% increase or from rehabilitation or new construction go to your urban renewal agency. That is where you get the money to fund urban renewal projects. A lot of times people get confused because unfortunately, urban renewal shows up separately on your property tax bills. So they think that it is a separate tax, and therefore if urban renewal went away, their taxes would go down. But that's just the way the assessor has to show those values. The reality is, a renewal is not an increase in your taxes. It is just a division of how those taxes are distributed to the different taxing jurisdictions. And the Gladstone Urban Renewal Boundary, the original area acreage was 284.5 acres. You may add by statute up to 20% of your original acreage to an urban renewal area, so that gave you capacity for additions of 56.9 acres. Previous additions, excuse me, were 29.21 acres, which left a remaining capacity of 27.69. This proposed addition is 21.5 acres, which uses up most of your capacity for urban renewal within the city of Gladstone. You have a remainder of 6.19 acres. If something happened that you wanted to add additional acreage, unfortunately, anytime that you add additional acreage from now on, it is again a substantial amendment, which means you have to go through this whole process all over again. So we have tried to make sure in this amendment that we're adding everything that you need to add to be able to complete the different projects that you want to do within the urban renewal area. This is the proposed boundary expansion. Before Portland Avenue was in the urban renewal area, but the properties on either side of Portland Avenue were not within the urban renewal area. And what this expansion does is put those properties within the urban renewal area so that you are allowed to spend money on the redevelopment or development of those specific properties. So this is what the map would look like of your urban renewal area if this amendment goes through. So you have quite a bit of other property that's within the urban renewal area. This will add those properties on Portland Avenue. If you ended up deleting or removing any other properties, that doesn't give you any additional capacity to add new property because that, that limit is not a limit that's, that's fungible. It's a set limit based on any additions, not taking into account any subtractions. By statute, all urban renewal areas have to meet the limitations for your city size. Your city's population is under 50,000, so you may have up to 25% of your city acreage and 25% of your assessed value in an urban renewal area. If this passes, you would have only 3.83% of your assessed value, so a very small portion of the total assessed value would be in urban renewal, and you would have 13.1% of your acreage. So in terms of impacts on your own city budget and even impacts on the other taxing jurisdictions, you're impacting less than 4% of the potential revenues that would be going to your city by extending the timeframe of the urban renewal area. The projects that are being considered in the potential amendment are trolley bridge reconstruction, that's partial funding only, so this would be a match to try to get other funding for that project. Development assistance of different types of development assistance, and those were outlined within the amendment. Infrastructure improvements to allow some of that development to occur. And then a property acquisition fund for new development. This property acquisition for development would be from willing sellers only. No eminent domain would be used to buy property that then would be resold for private development. This just shows.
Elaine, can I ask just one clarification?
Yes.
You mentioned the trolley bridge project. The bridge is intended to go over the Clackamas River, but the urban renewal district itself only goes down to the river. So the only part we could spend money on with possible exception of some planning and engineering would be that portion of the bridge that gets you onto it, but not the bridge itself.
That's correct. It has to be within the urban renewal area to be able to spend money on the project.
Okay, thank you.
This shows estimates of costs given the amount of money that would be available. So the estimate of costs in the different project categories. In this, you can see the different development assistance categories that are are outlined within the amendment and intended to be developed. So pre-development grant programs, storefront facade program, tenant improvement, grant program, development incentives. The two columns show the year 2024 costs, so costs in today's dollars, and then year of expenditure costs, costs over time as 3% inflation factor is figured into those costs. The $13.5 million is the amount of money that you would have if this amendment goes through to be able to spend on projects and programs. You don't have to spend them in these categories. This is our best estimate at this time. You are not required to stick to these estimates. You can move that money around depending on what the needs are. And you do that normally through your budget process. This particular amendment is proposed to increase the maximum indebtedness. Maximum indebtedness is the statutory limit for spending in an urban renewal area. It's the total amount of money you're allowed to spend on projects and programs and administration over the lifetime of an urban renewal plan. Your original maximum indebtedness was $23,589,427. You're allowed to increase that by city council action alone, by increasing it up to 20% of that original amount adjusted for inflation annually. And so that allowed increase is $10,174,550. And that's so high because your plan is old, and so that inflation increase allows that to grow. So the new maximum indebtedness, if a man would, would be $33,763,977. A bunch of that has been spent, so it's a little more than 13 million that you would have left to spend in the future, so that $10 million increase plus about 3 million that is unspent of your original. This shows what the expected timeframe is and the expected capacity in five-year increments. So net TIF, TIF means tax increment funds, the amount of money that comes in from the assessor's office. So that is the total amount of money, also including potential interest on loans. If you take out any money as a loan or bond, that interest does not count against your maximum indebtedness. The remaining maximum indebtedness as of 2024 is $11,500,000. It is projected that in years one through five, you would have about $4.9 million to spend, and in years six through 10, you would have $5.4 million to spend. As we said before, urban renewal's impact is on taxing jurisdictions. This just shows what those estimated impacts are. It is estimated that the area would go through fiscal year in 2034. And for the city of Gladstone, that estimate of impacts would be $5,363,155. There are also impacts on the different county funds illustrated. And we did go over those impacts with the county commission when we met with them. You can see that your own city of Gladstone is the most impacted of any of the general government funds. These impacts on these particular taxing districts are really low because they're. These impacts on, uh, these particular taxing districts are really low because there are only a couple of properties that they impact. Uh, I, a couple of these will actually not be impacted in the future because the assessor. Found that they had incorrectly coded a couple of properties. And then there's some right of way that is, uh, has utility value. And so the fire district one and the north Clackamas Park will be very minimally impacted through the life of the plan. This is the college, I mean, the, excuse me, the education taxing districts. And those impacts are shown below. On the education taxing districts, they are treated a little differently in Oregon than the regular taxing jurisdictions. Urban renewal for schools. Has an indirect impact, that impact for your regular schools and your education service district is on the state school fund. On the community colleges, it's on the community college fund. Those funds are funded by other sources. Urban renewal impacts. Those funds up there at the top where that green bar is, but there are other sources that what we call backfill. That state school fund, so that. The, uh, per pupil amount that's allocated to the schools does not go down because of urban renewal in Gladstone. Or urban renewal in Portland or in Lincoln City. The state school fund decreases by an amount that gets backfilled to meet that per pupil target. And that is the extent of my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions or wait to answer any questions after your public hearing.
Thank you Elaine, uh, you, you can go back over there and answer the questions from there. All right, I see Councilor Gollington, you have your hand up, you have a question for Elaine.
I do, on page, um, our page thirteen dash three. Um, it talks about what, uh, the potential projects. Um, and I noted that Elaine also had a potential projects page. I have two questions on that. Number one, on Elaine's spreadsheet, it says. Specifically about, uh, willing sellers, but it doesn't have that in this verbiage that I can see. And honestly, I didn't realize that I was looking for it, so if it's somewhere, somebody show it to me. And then the other one is, I'd like a definition of gap funds in the fourth bullet point.
I would have to go back and look at your original plan. There is an acquisition section in your original plan and typically. That language on not using eminent domain is in your original plan. If not, I'm, I'm happy that we could make an amendment here. And note that within this language under the property acquisition. And that might be the easiest way to do it at this point because I don't have access to that original plan. It is state law that you cannot acquire property and then resell it to a private person. So regardless of what we say here or put in. You, you are limited by state law to not do that in, in addition, so. We, we can definitely put it in here, but there's no way that you can take that action. And then gap financing. Is, it can, can be used different ways. So gap financing can be, uh, sometimes you have a developer who comes to the table and. They are wanting to do a development in your city and they're saying. We really like your concept. We want to do a mixed use development. Um, we do not have the funds to do X. Maybe it is, uh, funds at the beginning to do pre-development work. Maybe it's that the project doesn't financially pencil out. And so there is a gap in the financing and so an urban renewal agency can then come to the table with funds. To fill that gap that makes the project go from not being financially feasible. To becoming a financially feasible project. So gap financing is, uh, a terminology to be used when working with developers. To take a project from not feasible to feasible.
Okay. I have a couple of other comments, but it's not, it, it has to do with the overall project. So I'll just, I'll listen for everyone else's questions about what we've heard so far.
Okay, that, yeah, that's, that's where we are at this point in the, in the hearing is still at questions and clarification. I, based on some comments that were made in the planning commission. Um, I know that some people had kind of a sense of deja vu as we talked about specific projects and things. Uh, we, for example, we talked about, uh, in one of the things that we might be able to do would be, uh, storefront, uh, improvement assistance. And there's talk about downtown revitalization and the trolley bridge. Just to refresh people's memories, back in twenty twenty, four years ago. Uh, regional government metro had a bond, a transportation improvement bond for the region. That would have included some funds, I think it was in the range of seven to nine million dollars for Gladstone. For, for both our downtown revitalization, streetscape improvements and for the trolley bridge. The first year of a pandemic was apparently not a good time to get voters to approve a, uh, expensive transportation bond. So those funds were not approved and we never got any of that money. And so people who were thinking that we had some money somewhere for projects, that wasn't there. Also storefront improvements, uh, back when the city had some ARPA funds. I think there were, there were plans to have grants of one kind or another coming out of some ARPA funds that what might have helped some of our businesses who. Uh, maybe were impacted by the, uh, uh, pandemic. And Administrator Betts, can you refresh my memory? Did we use a lot of that funds? Do we have a lot of requests for it?
We still have approximately fifty thousand dollars set aside of ARPA funds that have not been designated yet. So that money is available for COVID related. We have not put together a program, I can ask Marcy, our economic development coordinator where we are in that process. But that program was not launched.
Okay, and I'm only trying to clarify this because I know that during the planning just. Commission discussion, people had in their heads, wait a minute, this, this reminds me of something where there was money available in the past. And I just wanted to be sure that we understand that we're talking about different sources of funds and different levels of amounts of funds.
Correct, and the reason why we didn't launch ours is because Clackamas County received about a million dollars. That then Oregon City administered on behalf of Gladstone. So businesses were encouraged to apply through that process. The city still does have ARPA funds, a couple of meetings ago, we allocated those to the general fund. And I expect in this next budget cycle. That the budget committee will have a say in how the remainder of the ARPA funds will be spent.
Okay, so I hope that puts the, the funding in a little broader context then for people's understanding.
May I chime in on it?
Yes.
I think that you're absolutely right. The, I know that there were many Gladstone businesses that were unable to take advantage of those storefront grants. Because they were not in operation prior to the beginning of the pandemic. Um, when that program was launched, there were timeframe requirements that frankly, a lot of businesses didn't make it through the pandemic. And so we have new businesses sprouting up in their place. So I think that, um, this is something to definitely keep our eye on as we move into budgeting season for the future.
All right, do any other city councillors have questions, uh, uh, to clarify anything that was in the staff report? Councillor, uh, Alexander.
On thirteen dash four bullet point five, it says notice to citizens of consideration of the ordinance via utility bills. In August, I just wondered, was there anybody that responded to that? Or comment or? So I was just putting the, putting the utility bill and people thought but didn't respond.
Yeah, we had a couple people request more information.
Okay.
And I sent them big thick printed packets and also responded to their emails and spoke on the phone a couple of times. Um, specifically to, um. You know, like older population that was having a hard time understanding even what this was. So, yeah, but nothing, nothing major, just basically request for more information.
Okay, thank you.
And it seems that once people understood it's not a tax increase, they wanted off the phone. That's all people really were concerned about was, is this going to increase my taxes?
Okay, and then there's also the, the, um, under the projects where we have, you know, a development grant program. Tenant improvement program, there's, there's, um. Values there, two thousand seventy-two, two thousand ninety, is that? How, we'll have to put some kind of thing, something in place to decide who gets that money?
Yeah, and that's a good point, Councillor Alexander, I, I want to make sure that. That the council understands that you're not approving a specific storefront facade improvement project tonight. You're not approving a specific amount for development incentives. The city council acts as the governing body of urban renewal. So all of those programs would not be launched until they've come back to the city council at a former time to review and approve. And make sure those are the types of programs that will be successful in Gladstone.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, that's a very helpful clarification. Okay. I was thinking of one more thing, but I'll, I'll leave it out. So, we've had staff, uh, so now, uh, we'll get to the public testimony, I opened the public hearing.
Mayor, Councillor Gollington has her hand up.
Oh, Councillor Gollington, I'm sorry, go ahead. Did you have an additional question?
You do not have to apologize, I apologize for not being there.
You have a little tiny box on my screen, so.
And that's fine, I understand. Um, one more, I just have one more small question.
Sure.
Right now, how much money do we, are, do we owe to urban renewal? And if we didn't do anything but make payments, when would it be paid off?
We've used some of our urban renewal money so far to pay, for example, for th- this building.
Correct.
That's the police and fire sta- or, uh, uh, police station in city hall. And we are paying off that money from urban renewal funds, so, uh, where are we on indebtedness on that?
Those debt service payments will be complete in twenty twenty-eight. So if the city council did nothing tonight. We would continue to make our debt service payment on this project here. And probably come back in twenty twenty-eight and say. Do you want to do a substantial amendment or do you want it to sunset? I believe, I don't have the balance on what we owe for that. But I believe there is just under about two to three million dollars in reserves. Which we need to keep there while we're making our debt service payments.
And can we get a quick explanation of what it would mean to sunset urban renewal?
To sunset urban renewal would be to close down an urban renewal area, so not the agency. But the area. To sunset it typically, uh, there, there can be two versions of that. One version is you have reached your maximum indebtedness or have decided not to take any more tax increment funds from the assessor. So, um, so, some a- areas do that before they reach their maximum indebtedness. They decide they just want to pay off the debt and close down the district, that would be sunsetting the district. You can sunset a district by discontinuing taking any tax increment revenues. But still have program income. That you got from a different source and continue using that program income. Program income comes off of property sales or loan repayments or interest on non. Tax increment funds, if you have that. You sunset taking tax increment from the assessors, but you can still operate under your urban renewal plan with that program income. If you don't want to keep operating with that program income, you can transfer that program income to your city. Budget. And. Close down that area completely so that there aren't restrictions on how you spend that money and you don't have to spend it within that urban renewal area. You still would have your agency, it would be dormant until or unless you decided to form a new area.
So let, let me just ask this for clarification. If we sunset. After we pay off the pu- the, the indebtedness from the police and the city hall buildings. We do not lose out on the taxes. The taxes are simply not going to urban renewal, they would go more toward our general fund.
Only those taxes that represent the city share of the urban renewal amount. So when I put up the slides that showed the impacts on taxing districts. A large amount of that money is the city share. But all of those funds from the education districts. N- none of that money is available to the city anymore. So right now you're leveraging that city share with other taxing districts funds. If you sunset your district, you no longer leverage that money, you just have your city share that you're able to allocate. And yes, you can allocate that anywhere in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Cook?
Uh, Councillor Gollington's question gave me a question, so I just want to make sure we're all speaking the same language because, uh. The, the language of public policy is not the language of our home budgets that we talk about a lot. So, um, when we use the phrase debt services payment, is that the same as interest in principle? Is that like a payment on a loan like I would have for my car note, okay? And then, um. Uh, the two to three million dollars that we currently have, um. In debt that we're currently indebted, that will be paid off in twenty twenty-eight. Just for my complete understanding, once that is paid off, if assuming we have no other expenditures. We would have zero urban renewal indebtedness, is that correct?
That part is correct, however, the two to three million is what is in reserves. We owe more on our debt service payment, I just don't have that balance for tonight.
That's why I was, that's why my eyes were crossed, okay, thank you so much.
Okay, I think we're at the point where we can get public testimony if there is any. Uh, and Tammy, you'll let me know if you're seeing online, but does anyone, uh, to wish to speak in support of the proposal?
We have one that has signed up to speak and that's John Southgate.
All right, John, could you come forward, please?
Good evening, uh, John Southgate, uh, eighty-eight, South Fourth Street, Independence, I've moved since I think I last saw you all. Um, is this recording, am I doing everything right?
Yes.
Great. Uh, I really just came here, I, I learned that tonight's the night and you're going to consider the amendment. And I, I want you to know, I'm so pleased for Gladstone, I know urban rule is a complex topic. Uh, you have the best in the business in Elaine helping you through this process. But, uh, to me, this is about, I guess the heart of it is the downtown revitalization. Which, um, is a passion of mine, I know it's a passion of at least some, if not all of yours. You may recall, I was retained, Jackie contacted me about eighty-three years ago. Well, I'm exaggerating, but I think it was two thousand and eighteen. You had just adopted, the city had just adopted a downtown revitalization plan, which is a great vision for, for your city, for your downtown and downtown of which. You will be proud. Um, so Jackie brought me in to talk to some developers about what will it take now for Gladstone? For, for the private development community, both pro- for profit or nonprofit, to deliver on that wonderful vision. Um, and the message I, I talked about a dozen developers, Jackie joined me in some of those. Uh, spoke with them about, um. They, I think to a person, they, they, they spoke very well of Gladstone, they thought you have a great vision. They said what you need to do though is, you need to fix your zoning, the zoning at the time prohibited. The sort of mixed use, I'll call it medium density development. You've done that, you adopted the, the code changes, I say use, not all of you were on the city council at the time, I think that was in early twenty-two that it took effect, I'm not sure. They said you need urban rule, which is a funding tool to help leverage the private investment. What, what urbanal does, um, is it, it gives, it will give your staff, Marcy and Jackie tools. To then go work with private developers under your authority, the, I don't think they could spend a dime. think they could spend a dime without your authority. They, you have to authorize programs. Here's what our storefront program will look like. If a developer wants financial assistance, um, here's the things we, the city council, expect from that developer. And there's a lot of different things you could do. Different cities do it in different ways. I'm happy to continue this conversation with you and with Jackie and Marcy. So tonight, if you do approve this amendment, that second, um, leg of the stool will be accomplished. The third leg, then, is also the public improvements, which urban rule is going to help to fund. Um, Portland Avenue, you're part of the Trolley Trail, which is part of the, what we used to call the forty-mile loop, this, this network of, of public, uh, regionally significant, public pedestrian bicycle ways around the region. Um, then also the Trolley Bridge. So, sorry for, I'm, I'm more long-winded than I meant to be. I just want to commend you, um, for, uh, entertaining this, this, uh, concept of urban rule. I think it's going to be critically important to achieve what I believe you and what I believe also your citizenry hope to see with your downtown. I think great days are ahead, so, um, I'm, I'm really excited for you. I'm proud of you. I'm proud of your staff for getting to this point. I even wore a tie tonight, so to let you know, this is a big deal. So, anyway, I, thank you.
Thank you. Is, uh, do we have other people who've requested to speak in favor of the proposal?
I have not received any, uh, cards here, and I do not see any hands up.
Okay, now, uh, the next item is for anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposal. Are there members of the public who have requested to speak?
I have not received any speaker cards, and I do not see any hands up.
All right, and then, does anyone wish to provide any testimony that is neither in support of or in opposition to the proposal? Additional testimony?
Again, received no cards and do not see any hands up.
Okay. Further testimony, or any further questions from the audience? All right, there's no need for staff comments because we did not have, uh, well, we had John's testimony. Uh, Elaine, do you want to add anything to what John said, or clarify it all, anything at all?
N- no, thank you.
Uh, I, I will just add, um, if I can, that, um, part of this process was, process was to go before the Board of County Commissioners and inform them of our intent to, to do this, and that it would be, uh, segregating some of the tax money that they would otherwise receive toward the city for this investment in our own downtown. And, um, Elaine and Administrator Betts and I were prepared for some pretty hard, tough questions from the county commissioners, but we were, I would say pleasantly surprised that, uh, they are, I would, I'm, I'm, let me not say collectively, but some of them are all in on Gladstone, what it's able to do. Uh, Commissioner Scholl mentioned that he felt this was a good investment for the county in a city which has done so much already along Portland Avenue. And, uh, Commissioner West from Wilsonville, who served as a city councillor there before joining the county commission, said he had voted for, uh, for and against urban renewal in his own city, but he pointed out that there were a lot of properties in the city of Wilsonville which have grown in value, uh, tremendously because of this urban renewal process and the development that it, that it, that it enabled. So, uh, that part of the process was very helpful to us. Also, we got some good feedback, uh, from Counselor, uh, Paul Savas, uh, who mentioned a concern that we should all have about making sure that this process and what the projects that we choose to do do not result in displacement of either individuals or businesses that already exist in that area, uh, which goes back to the comments made earlier about willing sellers of property. There may be a property on Portland Avenue that I would love to see, say, "Well, I never shopped there, I never go there. It would sure be nice to have a, a big apartment there, or a hardware store there." Uh, you know, I can't, I can't force that. The city can't force that. This is something which, as John says, kind of has to come from the people who own that property. And the other thing about our city, be aware, we have business owners who operate businesses in properties that they don't own. So there are two levels of business there. There are property owners who are landlords of commercial properties and, and residential properties, and there are business owners who operate within them. So, uh, it's, it's sometimes more complicated than just an owner-operated business. There are some of those too. Uh, but I wanted to get that in. Uh, that, that experience of going for the council was very valuable, and I'm glad that Administrator Betts shared a link to it so we could all see, uh, what we heard from them. Um, all right, anymore, do, do any members of the city council have questions regarding, uh, the testimony and anything that we've heard so far? All right, then, I think it's time to close the public hearing on, uh, ordinance number one-five-three-four and move to deliberation. So now it's time for the city councils to deliberate on whether we want to adopt this ordinance. And I'll recognize council members who'd like to weigh in. Councilor Garland, I see your hand is up. You're muted still.
My apologies. And there are quite a few red flags on this for me. Um, while I understand that I could ask a lot more questions, I feel like they could be, um, answered and, and be fine. So, I'm going to say that. Um, I have a real hard time with that ten million dollar indebtedness number. While I understand it means no new taxes and that kind of thing, when you talk about taking on ten million dollars in additional debt for urban renewal, and then there's that gap funds word down at the bottom, all I can think of is somebody coming in and making a whole lot of money on our, and walking away, and we've paid their gap funds. That, that's not warm and fuzzy to me. The other thing that I have issue with, and I brought it up prior to this meeting, and I will bring it up again, is the fact that this urban renewal map was not cleaned up. One of the jobs that we do as counselors constantly is to do housekeeping, whether it be on an ordinance or, um, our, uh, fees that we charge people, which we see that come up a, a lot. And I feel like there were properties, uh, mainly the Gladstone School District properties, that should have been removed from our urban renewal plan prior to us doing this large, uh, change for urban renewal. They, I, I understand that it's not going to make any difference. Um, in my opinion, there's a lack of housekeeping in that we did not take those out. There is the potential. The seven of us sitting here or on our city council won't be here in ten years. We may not be. I'm going to say we may not be. I won't say won't be. But that doesn't, and that doesn't mean that somebody couldn't potentially take some of this thirty-three million dollars and move it towards something or a property that shouldn't be on our urban renewal in the first place. So I have major issue with that. And then, um, that's where I'm going to stop. I will just say those things. And that's, that's my, my issues for the evening.
All right. Elaine, can you respond to the use of the term indebtedness? Because we talk about increasing our indebtedness by ten million dollars. We don't all of a sudden owe someone ten million dollars by doing that. Explain the meaning of that term and why it can lead to, um, sometimes erroneous conclusions.
Yes. Uh, un- unfortunately, our statute was written in nineteen fifty-seven, and so a lot of our statute is out of date and, um, things have changed over the years in terms of how it's interpreted and, and what you have to do. It used to be that you would have to issue a bond or take out a loan to be able to spend any urban renewal money and then repay that debt. Over time, um, bond councils and, and legal councils have said, "Well, we don't think you have to do that formal debt of going into debt by, um, issuing a bond or taking out a loan." Um, you still, urban renewal has to spend, you know, what's called debt. So my contract with the city is a debt instrument because it's a contract, it's an obligation for the city to pay. So that meets that statutory requirement of spending urban renewal money by debt. Within this plan, that new money that we're talking about getting, it is not anticipated that you would go out and take out any new loans or take out any new debt. You would only be spending that money as it comes in each year from the tax collector. So, but you would spend it through incurring debt. So you would spend it through spending money on an infrastructure project, that's a contract, or spend it through a development agreement that is a, a contract. And that what any, uh, John alluded to this, but anytime you would sit down and talk to a developer about doing a project, the city council approves that. So you would never spend ten million dollars on one project and have all of that money go away because you have, number one, infrastructure needs, and number two, other development that you want to happen. And your ci- your city council as a whole would have to vote for that to happen. So you are the check to make sure, uh, the check and balance that that kind of expenditure isn't made with this money. And, and there was also a reference, and, and I think it was, um, I, I, and I'm just clearing this up for anybody listening, you don't have thirty-three million dollars to spend anymore. You, you have that, uh, a, a little more than ten, ten plus what you've got, so thirteen or so. Um, and, and not, I don't think in anybody's wildest dreams who worked on this would all that money go to one developer or even two developers to spend on projects. And again, you would double check and approve any of that expenditure.
So, so some potential projects are sort of pay-as-you-go. We, we pay you a fee, uh, we don't have to take out a loan to pay you. Uh, if we're going to do stormwater improvements on Portland Avenue, we will put a bid out, get a contractor, the way we've done the INI project lately, and, uh, that probably will be paid in increments. That's the way those contracts, uh, I think are done. Uh, we'll know what we're in for when we approve a contract, a bid, and, uh, follow it. Um, if, if we assist, if we were to acquire land, or if we were to want to build a public building like we did with this City Hall and Police Station, then we could actually take a loan and have, uh, some indebtedness that we owe, which is the situation we are in right now for this building. But the ten million dollars really represents additional revenue coming to the service, not, uh, an obligation that we would be incurring immediately.
That's correct. And unfortunately, the statute just is written poorly, and it's hard to understand. So it's, that is easy for people to misunderstand or misconstrue. But in your case, what you're really looking at is spending that annual money that you'll get from the tax collector on projects within your urban renewal area. And that debt would just be those projects. It's not debt where you have to make interest and principal payments.
Okay. And then I'd like to respond, uh, to your issue of, you used the term housekeeping, which to me implies that there was some kind of an error, uh, in, in what was posted, put on the maps. Um, when this plan was originally adopted in nineteen eighty-eight, there were two major, uh, intended, uh, projects to be, to co- to be funded through urban renewal. One was, uh, on the Seventh Day Adventist property, uh, near the intersection of eight-oh-five and eighty-second. Uh, there was a thought that that could be a major shopping center similar to Clackamas Town Center, with transportation improvements coming off the freeway into it, road development on the site itself, uh, creation of, they said, between two thousand twenty-five hundred jobs, maybe additional street improvements nearby to support the workers. That never happened. That was project number one, never happened. That land is still in the urban renewal district. And I've always thought there's a potential because that we already currently have, uh, senior home facilities, I believe operated by the Seventh Day Adventist Church adjacent to that. If they ever wanted to expand someday, that land is already in the district and would be eligible for some kind of assistance to get housing or some other kind of project there. The second major project back in nineteen eighty-eight was the possibility of cooperating with school district on having recreational facilities for broad community use. And in two thousand five, one of the amendments, uh, in, in terms of funding was for the urban renewal district to assist with the funding of the, the track at the high school, which is now, uh, a community, broad community-available, uh, recreational project. There weren't a lot of others that I could find on the list of amendments. But once again, the property that is owned by the school district, which is within the, the, uh, urban renewal district, is still, could potentially be developed in some other way or, uh, improved in some other way that would fit with the original goals of the urban renewal district. So I would oppose, uh, withdrawing any land that's already been declared part of this district. Um, I know that the city of West Lynn is looking to build a, a new community center because they've never had one. We do. Uh, they've postponed doing it because they wanted to build one that had a swimming pool, uh, and that would be too expensive. But they're looking to build something now that doesn't have a pool but might in the future. Um, Counselor Roberts, you swam for the Gladstone High School swim team. Where do they practice?
Oregon City and the Elks Lodge Pool on McLaughlin.
Elks Lodge Outdoor Pool. And what season does the swim team?
In the winter.
Yeah.
The rain, the snow, and the wind.
So I'm not saying there are any plans with this right now, but boy, at some point in the future, the city of Gladstone thought it would be nice to have an aquatic center that would serve our school footb- uh, school swim teams and provide a swim, swim place for the community. It might be nice to have Gladstone School property within the district to fund something like that. I'm not proposing we do that now, but I'm just saying, I don't see any benefit in withdrawing any of the land that's currently in the district from the boundaries of the district. It doesn't benefit us in any way. It, and it potentially, uh, reduces some of the land on which the income to the city is, is based. All right, are there other counselors who have questions or, uh, deliberation on, on whether we should do this? Would anyone like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented?
I would make a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Roberts.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Counselor Cook to adopt ordinance fifteen thirty-four and ordinance making certain determinations and findings relating to and approving the Gladstone Urban Renewal Plan Amendment and directing that notice of approval be published. Any further discussion? All right, Tammy, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Garland?
No.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes. The motion passes five to one. However, since it's not, uh, a unanimous motion, we will, uh, have a second reading at, uh, a future city council meeting to vote on this again. Will we have to do a similar kind of public hearing at that point? We can just read the motion and take a vote. Okay. Uh, any other input on that process, Counselor or Administrator Betts?
The city attorney is shaking his head yes, so you only have to do a second reading at the October eighth meeting.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Jacobs. All right. Thank you, council, for, for this process. It's, it's complicated. It's new to us. This is our first, uh, major amendment, substantial amendment that, that has been done in the, what, thirty-six years of this, uh, uh, district. So, um, Elaine, we appreciate your input on this and your help with the process, and, uh, and John as, as well, all of you, and the Planning Commission too, for their role. Okay. Back to the agenda. Next item, number 14, 2526 Legislative Priorities for the League of Oregon Cities.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Gladstone is a member of the League of Oregon Cities. And about a month ago, I sent you information on the 23 legislative policy priorities. They are advancing to all the member cities to get input on what you think that your city should be focused on. They lobby for us and the legislative session. In your packet, I vetted these to the management team to get an idea of trying to narrow down the 23 areas that we felt had the most impact in Gladstone. And so tonight you have some options that you can discuss coming to a consensus. The city of Gladstone gets to vote on their top five priorities. You don't have to choose five. Maybe you only come to an agreement on two. That's fine. Maybe you don't like any of the eight that staff recommended and you have others that you would like to prioritize. But really, this is just a discussion for you to decide if, if you have a consensus on where you would like the League of Oregon Cities to focus their priorities. For the record, I will read into the areas that the management chose, and these are in no particular order. We have infrastructure funding, behavioral health enhancements, continued addiction policy reform, lodging tax flexibility, cybersecurity and privacy, artificial intelligence, 2025 transportation package, and a shift from a gas tax to a road user fee, which could be incorporated into number seven if you are having that discussion. So with that, Mayor, I will let you guys talk amongst yourself and see if we can come to a consensus.
Counsel Alexander, you have a question?
I do. So on that 2025 transportation package, and she says we can sort of shift, you know, from the gas to the road user fee, that eight, seven. Does that, is that instead of or alleviate tolling or help against the tolling? I mean, is that a transportation package? I'm, I'm just trying to figure out.
I've attended some meetings at a more local level on this, not at League of Oregon Cities level. But the legislature has to consider how we will fund things. And I think nothing is off the table. But a lot of people who were opposed to tolling are trying to present alternative means of funding so that tolling would not be necessary.
Okay.
And so that's a good question. These aren't necessarily goals that we would do in Gladstone. This is what we want the state legislature to focus on doing.
Support us.
And, and I will say one more thing because I go to C4 and Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium. There may be some of these issues which don't impact Gladstone as much as they do some of our, some of our neighboring cities or cities across the state in the rural parts of the state. Just because they don't affect us is not a reason for us to say, well, it's not that important. I think cities need to stand in solidarity with one another. I've appreciated when members of our council currently and in the past have informed themselves of some of these statewide issues and, and made input on them where there are opportunities to do so, where we can recognize the needs that other cities have. We have a great water environmental system services department here doing our water, clean water program and sewer and stormwater for this region. The city of Sandy has estimated it would cost them something like $200 million to get their water system upgraded to what they need in order to even begin building new homes. They have kind of a moratorium. So just because we're sitting pretty in Clackamas doesn't mean that there aren't neighboring cities who have great needs. And that's, that needs to shape the way that we look at this. I'm not going to speak in favor of any particular thing, but I want to hear from others of you.
The way I understood it, and that's what I'm just asking, is I just circled like the five I.
Okay, that we can, we can, we can do that. You can say, yeah. Let's hear from other people. Counselor Garlington, I know you've represented us at some league events or Oregon cities. I can't remember what it's called. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, I am on one of these committees that brought forth some proposals. And, and I, I just wanted to thank you for saying that although Gladstone may not be affected by some of these items, and, and you specifically talked about water, there are cities in our own state that are still carting water in for their communities. And for us to really wrap our head around that, it, it would be like a boil water notice for years on end. So it is important and it does include when the, the LOC talks to the state about our community needs, generally that comes back with funding. And, and some of this is funding that we need. And I know that we don't have like the lodging tax flexibility. That might not impact us as much as it impacts other cities. But at the same time, it's important that we broaden how we get to use those funds as small as we may think they are for our community. For some communities, they are much larger. So, and I appreciate Administrator Bets saying that these items were in no particular order. But the, my list is in the top eight of this list. And I hope that others have taken an interest in something here that sparks. I, I want to join in on some of this stuff and really learn about it and, and champion for the people across the state of Oregon. Thanks.
Thank you. Did others of you sort of choose among these or think of others or Counselor Cook?
I made up my own policy. Yeah, so I, I appreciated staff providing their top priorities. Four of my top priorities were in there. There's one that is not in the list provided by staff, but that is in the attachment. And it's community resiliency and climate change planning. Our community has faced some severe weather events that have both harmed individuals, but also businesses. I own a small business. And literally this morning, we went through our financials for the prior year. And there were several high heat events that caused events in downtown Milwaukee to be canceled that made a significant dent in our ability to be financially solvent. So a lot of times people think about climate change and they think, oh, you know, this is harmful to business. And absolutely, like absolutely not. I think that, you know, thoughtfully planning for these emergencies helps keep small businesses afloat as well as being supportive of our communities. And often the most vulnerable in our community is folks who are older or especially young or disabled. So my, the only one of my items that was not already on here was community resiliency and climate change planning.
All right. Thank you for that input. Other counselors have preferences? Counselor Huckabee?
I have just selected my top two and open to discussion on the other options.
Okay. Let's see. Are, are we in agreement that infrastructure funding ought to be one of the ones? Yeah, I, I think, yeah. Okay, so let's circle number one. I'm glad that we and the management team are kind of on the same page with that one. Although again, these are not necessarily in order. The transportation package is one that does impact our community. And we had a big hearing here. There's another one coming up in Happy Valley. We won't be able to participate as fully as we did in the one locally for that, unfortunately. But am I guessing that that also is one that people are concerned about? And, and as you say, the, the idea, as was said earlier, the idea of a road user fee as opposed to a gas tax or in addition to a gas tax could all be part of what that, what that transportation package might be. So you said you had two, Counselor Huckabee? Did we cover your two or was there another that you thought was?
My second, in addition to the infrastructure funding, was behavioral health enhancements.
All right. Did that happen to be one of yours?
I had number two.
You had, okay. All right, number two.
Yes, that was on my list.
That was on your list too, Counselor Roberts. Okay. Counselor Garlington, would you agree that behavioral health enhancements might be one that we could consider?
It is. And I think that goes right along with what we're doing right now as well. Because as we try to transition in some of that intermediate help in our emergency services, that just aligns with that right there.
Very good. Well, yeah, I'm glad that this is not something new, that we've been talking about it for a while. And it's one of those things where we've seen opportunities to maybe team up with other cities. And so, okay, so now we've got three. I don't see a lot here about housing, although for a lot of cities in our state, based on discussions I've had recently, the infrastructure funding is one of the things that perhaps will lead to the ability to do more housing. So who wants to offer maybe a third or fourth? Counselor Cook, I actually, Counselor Cook, your one about climate, resiliency and climate planning. Every time we have hot weather, I think more and more about how important that is. And my feeling about transportation and tolling, as I expressed in some of the meetings I attended, was you need to do land use practices that eliminate the need for tolling as much as you have, as much as you can. Which is why, you know, what we're hoping to do with our own downtown revitalization and making some amenities and features of the community close enough to people that they can get to by walking and not depending on an automobile. That's one way of addressing the transportation issues that we have. So I, I, I'm glad that locally we are beginning, or looks like we will be investing in, in doing some of that at the local level.
Yeah. The other two that I would advocate for are cybersecurity and privacy. As a small city with a small number of resources, I've been really concerned about our vulnerability to ransomware attacks. I don't know if anyone else has been following this. It seems like many small communities like ours have been specific targets of this. So that was on my list as a priority, as well as a shift from a gas tax to a road user fee. I feel like finding alternatives for funding so that we don't need to go back to tolling is a, is a great idea.
All right.
I also had five.
Cybersecurity as well.
Looking at your iPad and getting those messages from you that aren't you. You know, it's like, okay, I think that's when we should, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think. And we had other citizens in the community who are in the industry who mentioned this needs to be something our, our own. In information technology staff takes this very seriously. And I know it's not just city governments, it's even school districts that have been held ransom. So I'm willing to add that as a fourth one. Counselor Roberts, do you have other input?
I'd like to make a case for page 1420, the last one offered there, operator and training apprenticeships. Given my participation in the North Clackamas County Water Commission and attending some of the Oak Lodge and Sunrise meetings, that really is something where there are not a lot of opportunities statewide. Thankfully, we have been able to create opportunities here locally in Clackamas County, but still not enough. And so I think that one goes really hand in hand with some of that infrastructure that we've talked about. That was my number one priority, the infrastructure. And so I see this going just completely in tandem with that because we have to have people to run that.
Well, and that covers so many things, not just water, but also housing. Back when I was on the Downtown Revitalization Committee in 2016, I remember I was a, I subscribed to This Old House magazine and they had an article in there about the beginning of people in the trades who are in the baby boom generation starting to retire out of the trades. And what I have read is that right now there are about a million fewer people in the construction trades than there were at the height of the, the housing bubble, you know, beginning of the recession. Which means that all this infrastructure that we want to do, all this home building that we want to do to improve the, you know, improve the supply of homes, depends on people that know how to pound a nail and put in a pipe and all the rest. And if we don't have people trained to go into those professions, we won't have enough. I think a generation of experienced workers with a lot of institutional know-how would have eventually retired and been replaced by young people moving up. But the pandemic accelerated that so much that a lot of people that were in the trade said, that's it, I'm out. You know, I can't go to work. I'll, I'll retire now. And we have this big shortage. So it's something I sort of campaigned on when I ran for mayor, getting this, you know, these training programs for young people. The state has done a lot of it and we've passed some, some statewide legislation to encourage schools to have these programs. You are benefiting from it yourself, Counselor Roberts, I know. And I hear from young people all the time and see articles all the time about saying, you know, we need to get more young people into the trades, into these technical fields, doing these jobs that don't necessarily require a college education or big, big student loan debt, but that will get them working and paying and contributing to some of these big needs.
That's often the most enticing factor is the lack of debt accrued going into this. Because although many of these do not require a college degree, they eventually require an equivalent level of knowledge. You don't necessarily obtain a degree, but you do walk away with a significant amount of very specialized and specific knowledge that's very unique to what you're doing. And the funding for that exists in some places, but not everywhere. And that's the enticing factor that pulls people in because much like you said, many people are retiring. It's a negative growth rate at the moment.
Right, right.
Something that this, I, I do believe can contribute to curbing that, working towards curbing that.
A little bit of a side note, but Marcy sent out an email yesterday, I think, to small businesses in Gladstone, letting folks know that Clackamas County is actually providing $3,500 worth of scholarships on a first come, first served basis to folks who want to enroll in a certificate program through Clackamas Community College. So to anyone out there listening, spread the word. There's literally free money to go into the trades through Clackamas Community College right now. And it's literally on a first come, first served basis. So, you know, go get it.
Well, I, I'm hearing a strong consensus on, on several. Let me, let me hear, you, you have your light on. Let me hear one more from, from you, Counselor Huckabee.
I think I can have arguments for both the cybersecurity and privacy. You know, I work in healthcare administration and recently there was a nationwide attack on change healthcare that shut down almost the entire claim system for the country.
Wow.
I would, I would imagine some of you will be getting letters soon regarding that your information was hacked. So I definitely see the need for that. And then also, along with Counselor Roberts, there's a really good argument for that too. My son just entered into an apprenticeship. It was not an easy process and it's very, very competitive. So if we are able to open up more opportunities for that, I mean, that's going to be the lifeline to our country going forward.
Well, Counselor Roberts, from a management perspective, our human resources manager will be thrilled that she tried to champion that one to our top eight. But we said we're going to focus on it anyway, but I'd be happy to share that with you, so.
So what I hear now, and let's see, maybe not everybody's, everything is getting in, but the infrastructure funding, number one, behavioral health, item number two, cybersecurity and privacy, item number five. The 2025 transportation package, number seven, which would include within it possibly the shift from the gas tax to road user taxes, one of the package options. And then the last item would be the one that Counselor Roberts brought up about encouraging more operator and training apprenticeships. That's something that can be done more effectively at a state level than a local level. So can we agree on those five and send that along, send that input to the League of Oregon Cities? Counselor Garlington?
So after listening to Counselor Cook talk about the, the environmental climate change, I'm, I'm just right there with you because, you know, if you've been watching as some of the California cities are shutting down, not, I mean, I understand it's not happening quite that bad in our communities, but when we talk about not, I mean, I understand it's not happening quite that bad in our communities, but when we talk about small businesses losing out on a week's income, that, that does affect our community. So I'm, I'm kind of tunnel visioning that now on that one a little bit. Is there a way that we can take, let's take out that lodging tax flexibility because?
Well, we didn't include that one as one of our five anyway, but uh, the, the only thing I would say is, and I agree with you about the importance of the climate change one. The biggest factor contributing to climate change is the use of automobiles, transportation. Uh, so I think our, trying to address the transportation package, uh, if we can, if, if we can encourage the state to do it in a way that is environmentally responsible, uh, that would be one way of kind of getting two at the same time. Uh, but I, you know, when we're limited to five, it's really hard to narrow it down when you come up with six or seven that are important.
Well, I would be willing to give up the transportation package, leave in the shift from a gas tax package and pick up the community resiliency on environmental and climate change. That's just one.
Okay, so it would be one, two, five, and then climate change and um apprenticeships, that would be the other two.
I'm going, uh, actually, uh,
Oh, you wanted?
One, two, five, eight, and climate and community resiliency. And I will give a shout out to Watts Heating and Air Conditioning because they do their own in-store apprenticeship program. There's my plug.
Yeah, at the local level, sometimes we do have some of that, you're right.
I would caution with going against the transportation package only because you just adopted a statement of values that was submitted to Clackamas County and also because we opposed tolling for so many years. So that's just what I would consider.
Uh, that one is the one that affects us most directly as a community because our proximity is two oh five and because most of the projects in the transportation package from the last time that the, that the state dealt with it were very focused on this region. So uh, I agree with you administrator Betts. Uh, do we want to pull one more? Do we want to count on most of the other cities coming up at the same ones?
Am I correct to assume Jackie Administrator, um, Michael, that these will all get discussed anyway? On some level, it's not like any of these are less significant. These are just the ones we're stating are our priorities. These are the ones that maybe get more manpower, a little more attention, but that's not to say any of these aren't less relevant.
Well, what we're really doing is guiding, um, I'm going to call it a lobbyist. That's one term for it. There, there's a negative connotation to that, at least from my growing up years, but it's somebody, it's, it's the people who try to go to the uh, um, people in office and say, these issues are important to our cities. Yeah, send us money, give us guidance, uh, don't force things down our throats that, that you're not going to help us pay for. Uh, and um, uh, so it's, it's where they put their focus and energy. Uh, not to say any of these other things aren't equally important. We've had our, our own legislator, uh, um, former councillor Hartman, who's now a state representative, talk about issues that were important to her that she got through, uh, but uh, and, and every uh legislator in the state does that, has, has smaller issues or more personal issues or some that, that affect their own community. But when we talk about speaking as a common voice, that's where we need to kind of prioritize. So I think you're right in the way that works. Well, okay, infrastructure funding for sure. Behavioral health enhancements. Based on administrator Betts comments, I think transportation package ought to still be in there. So we're choosing between um, that's, that's three. And then the other three we talked about, we need to choose two out of these three, uh, cybersecurity and privacy. I'm going to call it career technical education in general terms and um, climate, climate change and resiliency.
Well, didn't you say, didn't he say like the twenty, the transportation package would sort of go coincide with the shift from GACS?
Yeah, I'm counting that as one. I'm just counting that as one, yeah.
That's what I wanted.
Yeah.
And so just to be clear, I show there is a consensus on four of them. Infrastructure funding, behavioral health enhancements, cybersecurity and privacy, and the transportation package.
Okay, so now we come, need to come up with one more, or do we want to just leave it at four?
Uh, I think I've been, I'm on team apprenticeships now.
Okay.
I was gonna say.
All right.
I, I still, I still strongly, I feel, still, still feel very strongly about community resiliency, but um, I think apprenticeships is where we can probably have the most impact.
All right, can we, can we agree on that? All right, all right. So that'll be our fifth one then. Okay, very good. Uh, this is one of those, this is where we should have had ranked choice voting or something like that. Could have gotten through this a little quicker, but the discussion is helpful. Uh, it's informative. Um, I, I don't always, um, I, I try to, to follow the, the stuff that we get from League of Oregon Cities. I assume you all get their emails about things. And um, it's hard to identify sometimes with the needs of the very small cities that are around us. But as I said earlier, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't, you know, support one another and recognize that as, as one of us goes, all of us, you know, uh, are, so we have to, have to support one another. So thanks, that's a good process.
Can I add one, one?
Yes, go ahead.
So I was able to uh, listen in on the water and the wastewater committee, some of the ones that they were talking about. And I will say when, when uh, you talk about the, the apprenticeship training, when they were talking about it and they decided to divide it out, there was a lot of um, talk about. So you know how they'll pass a bill and then all of a sudden there's funding for small pockets in there? That was the, the apprenticeship was part of the discussion about infrastructure and making it happen, not just funding it, not just demanding it, but how are we going to get it done? So I just, that's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah, infrastructure, housing, all of it is going to need people in the trades to make it happen. And so you've got to support that educational component and training component for that. Okay, we are at the end of our regular agenda. Any business carried forward administrator Betts?
I have nothing further, thank you.
Okay, any business in the audience? Have people requested to speak?
I have none.
All right, um, business from the council, we'll start with, um, let's see, let's, let's go from six to one. So we'll start with councillor Garlington. You can go first and we'll work our way down.
Uh, the only thing I want to promote and I should have spoke up during um, community events is October fifth, we're having a small plant swap, as you will, um, bring your bare root plants and we'll swap them out where you know, if we see ten to fifteen people, we'll be really happy about it. It's a really good way to get your yard filled up where you maybe can't afford to go out to Al's Garden Center and spend twenty-five dollars per plant. This would be free. So um, again, on the fifth, from ten to twelve, and it's just meet your neighbor kind of thing. Thanks.
All right, thank you councillor Roberts.
No, I have nothing this evening. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, councillor cook.
We got to do the fun part. There was a lot of work that went into the planning agendas, items that were on here, and I feel like we kind of stole the thunder um, of a lot of people who worked really hard on this in the past. So I just want to publicly appreciate staff, members of the planning commission and um, prior city leadership for really working so hard on those um plans because it's like a relay race. Everybody kind of like, you know, you pass the baton and everybody's heading in the same direction and I'm just grateful for all of the work over the many, many years to get that stuff going.
Councillor Alexander.
Yeah, not, not so much to have anything to say, just had a question. Can we, um, can chief Schmerber, I was reading this, you know, the Gladstone Police Report, I like to read those hand on.
Oh, yeah.
When's the last time we had an update on Toquilla Springs? I mean, we had management member, we had him come in and talk about they were going to get some management up there and everything. And then I was reading in here, you know, the incidences. Is, is it still going good or we get, do we get a report and update? I mean, because our officers are still going up there, but, but not as much, or I mean?
Yeah, there's a lot of activity at Toquilla. Uh, we haven't had them come here in a while. We could certainly have them come and do that. I believe I send the quarterly reports to you from Chief Schmerber. Um, it's at the pleasure of the council of, of what you would like. If you would like another presentation, we could certainly do that, or we could just have more detail from Chief Schmerber.
Well, I was just thinking of an update. I mean, when you see that, you know, a gun went off and, you know, things like that, I just wanted to know how that's going. Is it, is it under control more? Is it still out of hand?
Well, it was interesting because we didn't know that the management company allowed guns in the facility. And so when the gun went off, nobody called the police until kind of got around in the facility that that happened and it was on video. So then they contacted the police. Chief Schmerber has met with Clackamas County, who owns the building and the management company. And they need to start enforcing some rules. They shouldn't have guns at Toquilla. They shouldn't be allowed to have uh substances and alcohol. And so chief has been working diligently with Clackamas County, who agrees with us, but I really think it's a management issue of Toquilla. Um, but again, I'm happy to have the chief provide you some more updates if you would like some more information on the types of activity that they are frequently going to at Toquilla.
That would be nice, probably. It just affects the people living around there, you know, so.
I think it would be good to have them come and do a report out, maybe some uh, pressure from city council might get some changes over there.
Okay, councillor Huckabee, do you have anything?
Yes. I might jump around a little because as I was writing all my notes, I was like, oh yeah, I forgot to mention this. Um, so I am excited Thursday night to go to Clackamas Community College to hear the um findings from the Clackamas County Research Justice Project. Um, I think a few of us are going. It's going to be great. I wanted to say thank you to the community center staff for a fabulous volunteer appreciation dinner last Thursday. Um, it was great to see so many and meet the volunteers. I had a couple who sat next to me who are actually from Oregon City and choose to come to our community center um, because they feel more welcome and included than their home one. So I thought that was kind of cool. Um, I wanted to thank Gladstone Police Department for the quick investigation and arrest of the biased crime suspect. Uh, this crime was perpetrated on Portland Avenue, targeting an LGBTQ community member. Uh, I attended the Music on the Greens last month with my family. It was a great event with lots of communities, uh, community members present. And as we touched on earlier this meeting, the next one is on Friday, um, and they have partnered with the Rotary Club for food beverages and a movie afterwards. Uh, a reminder that on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, the library grand opening is happening at ten AM. I think that's it.
And I'll just say one more thing about the library. We have a grand opening ceremony, but um, uh, the, the, the library has been closed for a couple of weeks while books and, and, and equipment and things are moved over into that facility. I think the goal was that they thought they might be able to reopen as early as this coming Monday, the sixteenth. Uh, do we happen to know if they're still on track for that? Um?
I have not heard otherwise from the library manager.
Okay, so it, you know, uh, folks listening, you may be able to get into that library, begin using it far, long before we have a, a big ceremony to celebrate the opening of it. So keep that in mind. Uh, I tried to follow social media and, and let people know about some of those things and questions that they have. Somebody, uh, we had a discussion a while back about the hours changing in the library and one of the things that's changing too is the addition of these lockers outside where you'd be able to go and pick up your holds uh, anytime. So uh, you know, if, if one of the main things you do to go to the library is pick up books that you've put on hold, which I know is one of the main things I do. I don't sit there at the computers, uh, you know, I, I, I pick up my books and read them. I can do that at two in the morning if I wanted to, except I'm fast asleep at two in the morning because I'm in my seventies. I'm, I'm asleep at nine thirty, so uh, but uh, and I alluded earlier to comments and emails I get from citizens. Uh, you know, we're not a perfect city. Uh, somebody got a, a ticket for parking when they went to their granddaughter's or grandson's uh soccer game the other day. Uh, because it's not real clear to people coming from outside that you have to pay or that you can park at a certain area and not another area for free if you're there for soccer game. Uh, uh, little, little things um, that, that we do as a community, we can always find a way to do them better. I, I heard from somebody who um, wished that there were more swings for infants at um, at Max Patterson Park. And I've noticed online a lot, I see pictures now of combination swings where a parent can sit on one side and the infant can sit on an attached swing that's facing them and they swing together.
They're so nice, but they will make you throw up.
Oh, they will. Yeah, it's like, it's like taking your kids to Oaks Park, I guess, yeah. That's fun for the children, maybe not so much for the parent, but um, and uh, and I heard too from someone who attended the, the volunteer dinner resident uh, at uh, the, the mobile home community where there was a, a residential fire recently and uh, she spoke to councillor Garlington, I think, about trying to organize the fundraiser. Uh, we are a community that responds to the needs of one another, who looks for new and better ways of doing things, of improving things in the community. And that's always great. We don't always have a lot of public input at meetings, but that's partly because we're doing things so well and so effectively and uh, you know, under some great guidance from our staff that by the time we get things here tonight, every, in a meeting, most everybody knows that we're moving in the right direction and continuing on good policies. Um, it's an election year, we, we could change some leadership, we could change some policies, directions, we could shift one way or the other, but um, I like for the most part that we are focusing on the goals that we set for ourselves, moving in positive direction for them. Uh, I think part of the good reception that we got at the county when we presented our plans for urban renewal was based on the, the reputation, positive reputation that this city continues to, to grow with other cities in the area. Uh, we are doing things right, we are improving. I am envious of some other cities around us a great deal. But I just use that as a way of challenging us to be uh, to, to develop more and to do more and to be even better than we are. So. All right, that's all I have for tonight. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, uh, moved by councillor Huckabee and seconded by councillor Roberts. Uh, Tammy, call the roll, please.
Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Huckabee.
Yes.
Councillor Garlington.
Yes.
Councillor Roberts.
Yes.
Councillor Cook.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, motion passes. We are adjourned at eight thirty-seven.